All right, well, I want to welcome everybody by my clock. I do have 7:00 P. M. So I would like to call this virtual city council meeting for the city of Williamson to order for Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. And at this time, I would like for us to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic
Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God,
indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Roland.
Here.
Bizzard.
Here.
Ballenger.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you, Barb. And now I'm looking for an approval of the agenda for this evening.
So moved Weiss.
Second.
Thank you. I have a second. Second. Thank you, Weiss. Thank you, Dan. I believe we're going to do a roll call for each item to be erect. Hallie?
Correct.
Yes. Barb, would you call the roll for the agenda, please?
Bizzard.
Yes.
Ballenger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Okay, according to our agenda, we now have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum five minutes per presentation. Hallie, do we have anybody that would like to address for us participation?
Sharon LaPointe.
Hallie, I'm basically here just in case there are any questions with regard to the farmers market agreement between the city and Sowing Growth. So I don't have any comments to make at this point, and I'm just available as a resource if needed.
Okay. Jane Reagan?
No. Nope, no comments.
We have Monica Schaefer, but hers is not. There's a not. Oh, here we go.
No comment.
No comment. Okay. Like, everybody. All right, thank you, Hallie. Next, we'll move along to the council minutes for March ninth, two thousand and twenty. I'm looking for to approve that on changes that needed to be made.
So moved Weiss to approve.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. Barb, will you call a roll for the approval of the conference night?
Ballenger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Noah, we have the opportunity for accounts payable. I know this was a little bit unique this time for you, and you had some great questions for Corey that I believe he was able to answer for you.
That's correct. For everybody on council, I had a chance to review both groups of the submitted invoices. I had approximately nine checks that I questioned, and Corey responded accordingly. So I would like to make a motion to approve check seven two nine eight three dated three two of two thousand and twenty through check seven three zero three four dated three thirteen, two thousand and twenty for a total of eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if you need to. I think we need to do both these in separate motions, so that's my first motion.
I would agree, Noah. Thank you very much.
I'll second his first motion.
So we have the first motion for the first set of accounts payable. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second. Gene.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Ballenger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Noah, your next set of accounts payable, please.
Okay, I had the chance to review these also, and all my questions were answered from Corey. So I would make the motion to pay check seven three zero three five dated three thirteen of two thousand and twenty through check seven three one one nine dated four six of two thousand and twenty in a total of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. Or it might be seventy cents. I got to double check here. My handwriting is not the best.
I think it's seventy.
I have seventy.
Seventy cents. There we go.
All right, I'm looking for a second to Noah's motion for the second group of accounts payable.
Second, Reins.
Thank you, Dan. Barb, will you call the roll for the second group of accounts?
Ballenger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy. Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Okay, Noah, for being able to do that, and I know that you and Corey had that worked out, so I'm glad it worked. Moving right along to our action items. Our first item is the farmers market agreement with Sowing Growth. And Corey and I spoke earlier today about this, and I just wanted to clarify. In the notes for the sowing, it was written for five seasons, but will be for six seasons because it runs twenty twenty through two thousand and twenty-five. And I know Sharon, we have you here regarding this. Does anyone have any questions for Corey with the memo that he provided?
This is Councilman Roland. I do have a number of questions actually about the agreement. It's one of those scenarios where just trying to. I know there's been a bit of a storied history being on planning commission prior to this. I don't know if we have to make any motion to give a disclaimer on what's being written on the screen because it's completely off from what anybody's saying, so. We're good. Is that going to be recorded in the permanent record? Because these, it's tracking some funky verbiage there, but. Okay. Burgers, what? Some funky. Okay. All right, sorry, I was a little distracted by that. But so, you know, I know that the city used to actually run the farmers market, and now it is with the current organization, Sowing Growth. And at this point, I guess my first question is, you know, why is an agreement even necessary? It looks like they fall into, from the farmers market I've been to, the times I've gone, they definitely fall into, from what I glean, and I could be wrong, is an exemption from any sort of licensing they would need. But in terms of an agreement like this, why is that even necessary?
Corey, I'm going to ask you to answer that first question for Jeff, if you would, please.
Yes, thanks for the question. The agreement essentially provides two things that would not be normal in a typical reservation of a city property. The first is that we have agreed to provide storage within one of our storage buildings at McCormick Park. And the second thing is that there's a waiver of electricity in the water spigot access that's provided. So the agreement, those are the two, the two big things that are provided by the city via the agreement in support of the program.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you consider this a special use? Or a special event use? Does it fall under that sort of criteria in terms of our zoning ordinance?
We've not looked at this as a zoning matter, I guess. We've looked at it typically as, you know, an event held on Sundays. So anyone has the ability to request the use of a city property, city parkland. What this specifically does is it guarantees the availability of that area on the specific market days, and it provides the storage and the waiver of those costs. But we have not ever looked at this as from a zoning perspective.
Okay, and in terms of, I see a lot of what the city will do. Sowing Growth is essentially stating they're going to operate the market. It's pretty much their agreement. But there's a lot of things the city is giving up here, as well as what if something goes wrong during the use of, during the event of any farmers market? What is, maybe it's more appropriate for Tim, what is the city's exposure here if we don't have some indemnity provision in this agreement that protects the city if something goes wrong? Are we concerned about that at all?
Well, it wouldn't be the same as anybody else using the park property. I don't know if you have anything else that goes along with this, an application or anything. It certainly wouldn't hurt to have an indemnification provision in there and insurance if that's what you're going to require.
So I know that we've not required that in the past from them, and I don't really know. It's, we've not had any incidents in the past, and Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going on almost six seasons at McCormick Park in the parking lot, possibly longer.
Eight. This will be your number eight.
In McCormick parking lot.
Right.
And I know that you've had a long association with the farmers market, Jane. Has there ever been any type of incident that has happened that you can recall in the past that would give you, that would give us concern?
Well, the president of the board, Sharon LaPointe, she can explain it. We have liability insurance.
We do. We have insurance for the, every single Sunday, and then we have a rider for the fundraiser that we we hope we can do. We brought it back to McCormick Park this year.
Right.
That's something that you had hoped for, and we could do that. So I think that from a liability standpoint, we certainly take our responsibilities seriously, and we have insurance, and we give proof of insurance to the city every season and for the special event, too.
Right.
With that being, with that being in mind, then, Tim, we wouldn't need any type of indemnification language, correct, if they have liability insurance?
May I?
Tammy. Tammy, Corey's raised his hand.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Corey. Go ahead.
I just want to point out, and I'm going to ask Barb to confirm this, but the farmers market, just like any other event on city property, they do have to fill out the city property use form, which has provisions for insurance and a number of other items that we look for when we are allowing an event or function to be on city property. Barb, is that fair to say?
That is correct, and they did submit those forms, and they did submit everything they needed for using that herself.
Even when the city, this is Jane, even when the city ran the market, the market manager filled out those forms to use the parking lot every Sunday, even though it was a city, it was a city-run event, so.
Correct.
Awesome. That's great feedback. I appreciate that. Just wanted to dot that out across that. Tim, is it necessary that the city is added as an additional insured or not? I mean, just the fact that they have insurance is enough?
You are. You're named. Right. City is named.
Okay.
You are.
Right on.
This is, this is all consistent with I said, with what I said previously, and that is that the application form that goes along with this agreement would have the indemnification and insurance provisions in it, so the agreement doesn't have to repeat that.
Okay. One last question. Promise I'm done after this. So I guess the number one thing the city will do, is there a way that we can just limit that to weekends or just Sunday? I just, I'd hate to enter into a five, six-year type of agreement if we can find another option for maybe summertime, Wednesday nights. If someone approaches us, this agreement prevents us from not doing anything. Just number one seems extremely limiting. I just don't know if we necessarily would want to agree to something like that for such an extended period of time. So I'll just kind of leave that out there for anyone to comment on, expose.
Jeff, can you?
Jeff. We're done. Bizzard has his.
You just said that. Okay. But when, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
So, quick question. I see where Jeff's going with us a little bit. Like if, like for Worship Fest and things like that, if there's other events, how is this going to be planned with the parking lot? And those, I think this is what he's getting at. And Jubilee.
Yeah, and it's even if there's another organization that wants to do a farmers market, right? Like if someone else came and said, hey, I want to do a Wednesday farmers market, this is saying that we can't do that. So I just, it's extremely limited. It's, yeah.
Tammy. Dan has his hand raised. Dan Ryan has his hand raised.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
I think as far as the issue of other organizations wanting to use the park on a Sunday, I don't think, I think there's enough room and space in the park that, you know, they can they can cohabitate. I can't speak for Worship Fest, Jubilee, you know, they've always incorporated well in with Jubilee. We put them in our flyer as an event happening on Sunday. There's never been an issue there. The farmers market, I see Jeff's point when you're scheduling a a city use for every Sunday for the summer for six years, that's a, that's a large block of time to schedule out, but I feel like there's an opportunity for the organizations to work together if there's a scheduling conflict to try and accommodate one another.
Jane has her hand raised.
Hi, Jane. I just wanted to say, we're only using the parking lot. We're not asking in any part of McCormick Park other than taking items out of the storage unit behind, behind the van shell, bringing them to the parking lot, and then taking them back again around three. So it's not the park. It's just the parking lot that this is, that we're using.
The only. Oh, I.
Roland has his hand raised.
Yes, Jeff.
So, yeah, I think, I think everyone sort of missed my point a little bit there. What I'm stating is that the item one, where it says the city will in this agreement, it says not operate a farmers market in Williamson for the duration of this agreement. And what I'm saying is that what if we're approached and we want to sponsor and bring back into the city, say, a Wednesday farmers market? We just, we don't know what's going to happen in the next few years, right? And so I just see that as extremely limiting, whereas we could revise item one to simply state not operate a farmers market in Williamson during the weekends of this agreement, which actually has a month timeframe in here, I believe. And so it's more about that. It's that we're just simply agreeing for five, six years. We're never going to do a farmers market in any other fashion, and it just seemed a little very limiting to our opportunities that might arise. And so I just was wondering if people thought the same, or should we revise number one to maybe state just the city Williamson won't do a farmers market on the weekends or on Sundays?
Tammy. Hands raised.
To that question.
Tammy.
If you can, Sharon.
Oh, hands raised are Gene Smith, Sharon, and Tammy.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask Sharon to answer that question, and then Gene, when Sharon's done, go ahead.
I think originally, this is original language, and it's just carried over. When we when we started the market, we had to we had a situation where we didn't have a market manager. We were supposed to start the market within one month after this the cessation of the prior market manager. And essentially, when you're doing something that soon, you needed to have protection that there wouldn't be another market competing for someone that was just trying to survive. There's a lot of competition with respect to farmers markets as it is. And, you know, we are supporting ourselves here. We're not asking for any money from the city. And to switch from having a city-operated market to beginning another market and having that be a viable entity, I think we are of service to the community. We have tried to work very hard in having, in developing community relationships and developing a good relationship with the city itself. And one of the reasons why we wanted a little bit longer timeframe here is because it's very hard. We only had two years of, you know, guaranteed use of this space and also of the storage space. And when you're trying to plan ahead and, and become increasingly viable and develop programs, et cetera, you need to have a comfort level that you're going to have a home upon, you know, upon which to build. And so I think that's the, what we were seeking here was to have that capability. So.
Okay.
That's the purpose of it.
Gene? Gene, what is your question?
So I think maybe, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but I'm thinking this says that the city itself will not operate a farmers market.
It doesn't prohibit a farmers market from coming into, you know, for there being another Sowing Growth or another entity that wants to approach the city. But it was that the city itself would not, would not become our competitor.
Gotcha. So if the city's not intending.
And I'd like to follow.
Then we're, okay.
Follow up with that. I have a question for Sharon and for Jane. You both know, and I'm sure your whole entire board knows, that the LFA is right there in the bottom of Keller's. So how do, you guys don't feel that that's competition for your Sunday, correct?
It's a, it's basically, this is Sharon. It's basically a retail, like a little grocery store. So it's operated differently than, than we are. And there's a, the way it operates is that there's a thirty percent commission that the farmers pay for selling stuff there. So it's quite a different. You know, we, yes, it's operated differently.
Okay.
And quite frankly, some of our farmers who are our vendors do have, do sell stuff there. They have another.
Because it's there, it's it's another opportunity for them to sell their goods, and
Right.
your farmers market is limited, you know, seasonal.
It is.
Anybody else have any questions regarding this agreement or for Sharon or Jane?
I have one question, and it, you know, regards.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, my question was, is there ever a chance that you would hold this, not in the parking lot, but in the park itself, move it to create more parking? Because I know parking is an issue in our downtown area, especially during certain times of the year with other events and things that would coincide with your guys' event.
We've, we've never considered it, but for our big fundraiser event, we have plans to, and we've asked the city to use the entire McCormick Park for one special event. But our farmers market itself, we've never considered moving into the park. I, the parking lot is, still leaves plenty of room for us to grow. And even if we, I don't know, Sharon, double our vendors, I still think we would have room on Sundays for all the vendors to be in that parking lot.
I think so under normal circumstances. You know, with, with the situation now, we'll probably be having fewer vendors and more space between them, at least for a while.
For this summer, right.
But I will tell you that the weather is such an ingredient in location for a farmers market. If, if we were to move outside of a paved area, but the amount of rain that we have either on the day of or the day before the market, it can make it quite, it can make it sloppy for the pedestrian consumers and also for the vendors themselves. So the parking lot really is, that's home. So, and I do think there's definitely room for more vendor spaces there.
Do I have?
The parking, so we have a lot of pedestrians, if you can believe this. Our biggest times that we, our biggest flow of people is when church gets out, when Saint Mary's gets out, and when the Methodist Church gets out. So we have a lot of walkers. And that's important to have a nice surface for them as well, and especially for persons with disabilities or mobility impairments. It's a really nice surface, so.
Thank you.
Okay. If it. There's other questions and notion for this farmers market agreement with Sowing Growth?
Oh, Jeff has his hand up.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I put it up a few minutes ago, but I know we're looking for a motion, but I just want to clarify, and it is a restrictive agreement. And I think I understand that as long as it says the city will not operate a farmers market, I don't think we want to operate another farmer, farmers market. But I, I think that if what we're saying is we don't want any other farmers markets coming into the city, I I don't think that's the case, because like, like Jeff said, what if we have during the week or an indoor farmers market during the winter that someone proposes? I don't think we should restrict us, just, but if it's the city will not operate, I'm good with it.
I, go ahead, Sharon.
In response, that language was specifically written that it was the city will not operate. I cannot be more clear about that, because that was our greatest fear at the time.
Right.
Honestly, it was our greatest fear at the time that we were in, were trying to say, what's our next step here? And we can incorporate, we can become a nonprofit, but, but because it was a very strange situation, because there was no market manager, but there was an advisory council that was kept, and there was the potential for the city to actually operate a market, and we weren't going to be competing with the city for operating a market. I mean, if you wanted to operate a market, have at it. But that was, you know.
No, I, I think we get all that. I mean, where I was coming from is that, very similar to when the farmers market started in Williamson, it was city-sponsored, we're being prevented from helping another organization maybe stand up something in the winter. we're being prevented from helping another organization maybe stand up something in the winter, like Jeff said, or, you know, maybe assisting them for a year or two. And, and so that's all I was saying is that
Yes.
if, if we wanted to help another organization that meant well and was trying to bring something to the community, th- this language is extremely restrictive.
It does not.
And it prevents us from doing that.
Yeah, it does not preclude you from doing something as long as you are not operating the market.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is that as a city, I, I would recommend us not to approve language like that.
Right. Dan Ryan says his hand raised. Dan Ryan says his hand raised.
Okay.
Do, does this? Does this prevent us, this language, prevent us from allowing another farmer's market on sale Wednesday, like Jeff said, from operating and then giving them the same, um, waiving their electricity, waiving their, their water, all that kind of stuff? As long as it doesn't prevent us from doing those same things, I don't see a problem.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm going to reiterate what Sharon just said. Their biggest concern was that they would be in competition directly with the city if the city were to start operating a farmer's market. What this agreement ensures them of, and back at that time, was that they would not be in direct competition with the city. And what I understand Sharon and Jane stating is that if there were another organization that were to come into Williamson and want to do something on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night, they don't have a problem with friendly competition. But it, it was just giving them that safety net that they were not going to be in competition with the city. A lot of you council members came on after that point, but for Noah and I, we remember the, 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 the birthing pains that this new group went through to get to where they are. And I think they've done an amazing and successful job at becoming a very independent, uh, organization. And so, um, as long as they do not have problem with friendly competition, or if they even wanted to encourage somebody to come in for a winter market so that some of their vendors could participate in that, I think that that would be okay, correct? Uh, Sharon?
It would be okay. And quite frankly, it's something that we are considering doing ourselves. So, I mean,
Okay.
Yeah, we want to, we are looking at it.
So I, if I.
Yeah, but no, that's.
So I think we've cleared up that, uh, I think we've cleared that up on the agreement. Are there any other questions regarding this agreement?
Tammy? Gene, Gene has his hand raised. Gene Smith.
Okay, Gene, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I think we're past the birthing pains phase of this. Um, and we're clearly, we, we have no interest as a city to, uh, run a, a farmer's market. Um, would it be, would there be any impact or any reason to just not include or, or to strike item number one out of there in the motion? That would kind of make everybody feel better.
I guess, I, I did not see a problem with this agreement, um, just because I know the longer history of, of the, of the farmer's market. Um, Tim, um, do we necessarily have to strike something out, uh, have it rewritten? I mean, I don't want to hold up the farmer's market from moving forward. Um, in the event that the COVID-19, all of the executive orders, you know, um, get rescinded or changed so that they're able to operate?
I, I think they're able to operate right now. Several farmer's markets are operating. And as far as striking that, if you wanted to make a motion to approve the agreement with, without that first paragraph in there, you could certainly do that. And then we could revise it accordingly. As far as the interpretation, it is only with regard to the city. It can't be with regard to a separate farmer's market because of several things. First, everybody should have the same opportunity to use the park property. And we can't discriminate against another user simply because it might be another farmer's market that could be in competition with sowing growth. So we, we can't do that. And otherwise it would be a restraint of trade and we can't do that either. All we can do is promise that we, the city itself will not do this. And this is just really a revision from the initial language in the original la, uh, agreement that the city would cease operating. And since we already ceased operating, they're just saying, continue with your cessation of operation during this agreement. And the city can agree to that.
That is correct.
But we can't agree that nobody else can have a farmer's market.
And we are not asking that.
Correct.
And if we don't want.
So I guess I'm looking for, so what I'm looking for is I'm looking for a motion to move this forward or a motion to amend it. So. John, I see you have your hand up.
Yep, I'd like to make the motion to approve this agreement with, uh, between the city of Williamson and Sowing Growth, um, for the term of five years, uh, starting 2020 through 2025.
Specifically at six, can you make that friendly amendment?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can you make a friendly amendment? It's six seasons, not five?
No, he said five years.
Oh, okay, five years. Okay, sorry, Tim, my, my bad.
There are five, five years, but six seasons within the five years.
Okay.
This is Noah and I'll second it.
Thank you, Noah. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question, uh, for Sharon, please. So, so i- it, does the longevity of the agreement provide you more, uh, funding options? Is, is that the desire to do the longer agreement? And, and, and before you answer, I'll tell you why I'm concerned is that there's a lot of terms up, um, you know, and, and what we're essentially agreeing to with this longevity is going to bind potentially other future, uh, council members. Um, where new opportunities could arise over the next handful of years. So I, I'm just wondering if there, there's a, a distinct reason for increasing the longevity of this agreement. Is it a funding scenario? What, what is, does it, does it provide you more opportunities to get investors? What, what is it?
I think that it is, um, this, the, these last two years just flew right by. And we have, we have plans of, of programs and things that we want to do, um, prospectively. We, we started some children's programs, the power produce program. We'd like to, uh, maybe run a longer market. But, but you can't do that if you don't, if you're always worried about looking over your shoulder and the time is up and you're not going to have a home and then you have to find a new home. I think it really helps, um, for us, we have an identity with this location. And, um, you know, it's part of our brand, if you will. So it was really to take advantage of that. Is there a particular, uh, grant out there that's going to require it? No, not necessarily, but it is going to make it easier for us to do longer term planning. I mean, we're finally to a point where we're not just surviving, but we are, we are trying to thrive. And it's to help us do that.
Awesome. Thank you for that feedback. Thanks, Tammy, for the indulgence.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Jane. Um, if there, there's no further discussion, I'd like for Barb to call the roll, please.
Weiss.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Sharon, Jane, welcome to the next five years of being in that parking lot.
Much. We appreciate it more than.
I know, I, I know that this has been something that, um, was weighing on your guys' minds. Now that you know that you have that home, I wish you success. I know that the city one, supports everything you guys do. You, you bring such value add to the city. Um, it's an extension of the downtown district on Sundays. And people that come to the market also go downtown to the restaurants or to the retail shops that are open. So it is such a good partnership to have, and I just am very excited to see where you guys go this summer and every summer after that.
Thank you. We are lucky that in the governor's executive order, farmer's markets are not, uh, are, are allowed to operate. So we're counting on opening on, as planned. Sunday, May 17th is our first, um, market. And I think all of you are on our newsletter email list. I will double check that. And I encourage you to take a look at our annual report, looking back at 2019. The financial impact, the numbers of people that visited, um, during the season. It really is fascinating to see those numbers. And then once we print it, we'll send you all a copy of the printed annual report as well. Thank you very much for your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I appreciate it so much. Okay, I'm gonna miss along to our next action item. And that would be a resolution providing for the continued basic operations of the city and suspending utility, late fees and shut offs during the COVID-19 state of emergency. I'm gonna turn it over to Cory.
Thank you very much. Uh, so what you have in front of you is a resolution that attempts to capture a number of the different operational changes that we've made in light of the coronavirus and specifically, uh, series of executive orders that have come from the state of Michigan governor. Um, namely the.
I might have to go on here in a minute, but yeah.
Sorry, namely the, uh, stay home, stay safe order as well as, um, executive order 20 dash 28, which had to do with restoring water service to occupied residences. And so what the resolution attempts to do is, um, account for the fact that we have had to close public buildings. Um, we have suspended water shut off. We've suspended late p- fees on, um, past due utility bills due to the fact that we have had to close our city hall. Um, people can still make payments in our Dropbox, uh, through the mail and online, but we have effectively eliminated the ability to pay cash here at city hall, uh, during this period of time. And then it further goes on, um, to authorize these things until such time that the executive orders, uh, cease. Um, as well as giving continued flexibility to make decisions on city operations. Um, we have attempted through the course of the last couple of weeks, uh, to keep our staff safe. Uh, to pull both the state executive orders as well as the Ingham County Health Department orders that, that pertain to, uh, critical infrastructure workers that are still reporting on site. Um, and so that has to do with, uh, doing a health screening, um, and checking for symptoms of coronavirus. Um, so this is an attempt to capture all of that in one document. And, uh, we would simply ask for, uh, approval of this with the caveat that, uh, we will continue to keep council apprised if we have to make, uh, continued modifications to either city operations or our, uh, established practices.
Thank you, Cory. Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, um, there's, and I don't know if, if this has been updated since last Friday. The references to executive order 2020 dash 21, and perhaps even reference to an extension of that by the Michigan legislature to the April 30th date. Those references should be updated now to executive order number 2020 dash 42, which has, uh, taken the place of and rescinded 2020 dash 21, but has, uh, superseded it retroactively. So just those references in the resolution should be modified.
Thank you, Tim.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Yep, if this executive order is extended again, are we going to have to revisit this and change numbers or anything like that? Or is this already gonna just kind of carry over?
I, I, if I may, I believe there's reference there that also said, or any other extensions of this order.
Okay. Um, Cory and I had a great discussion earlier, um, regarding the late fees and the shut offs. Um, I had questions, um, regarding wh- what do we do and how do we get back to normal once these executive orders are, um, no longer in effect? And my question to Cory was, um, let's say we have a resident that has not paid their water bill for three months. We did not shut them off. We did not assess late fees. How do we then go back to normal? And Cory had great answers for me, so I'm confident that the city will have a plan in place for that. Um, he also, uh, mentioned that, um, as far as late fees being assessed, um, what we would have normally collected in late fees has not really increased that much from the previous months. There's been a slight increase and Rachel can probably speak to that if anybody has questions. But I was very, um, happy to hear that once we do get back to normal, whatever that new normal looks like, um, we will have a plate, we will be able to put back into place, um, our, our standard policies regarding late fees and, and shut offs.
So just for clarification.
Anybody have any questions?
Yep, there's, there's, um, so if this executive order and all that, and the state of emergency is done with, let's say a couple of weeks down the road, they have to put it back on because, I mean, I'm just going by what's happening on the other side of the world. There, the stuff I hear and have read that is popping up again, we're gonna have to take action again, correct?
I, I would say that
Go ahead, Cory.
if, if the current executive orders are allowed to expire and then there's something that comes down the pipeline later because there's been, uh, new increases in infections or something like that. Yes, I believe we would have to, uh, start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Cory? For any present? No? Okay, Cory, thank you so much. Um, I'm looking for a motion for this resolution.
I will make the motion, uh, to approve the state of emerg- hold on, let me go back to the first page. Uh, let's go to, uh, approve the resolution providing, uh, the continued basis operations of the city and suspend utility, late fees and shut offs during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second motion or a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Was that Gene or was that Jeff?
Smith.
Smith, thank you, Gene. Any further discussion? Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan's.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, we have our last action item for the evening, and that is the temporary amendments to vacation and personal leave policies. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Cory again.
Thank you very much. Um, this action item is a result of the current, uh, situation with the close down of facilities. Um, and the, the deeming of essential workers. So in local government, you know, we had to go through an analysis of, um, how to keep our essential infrastructure and, uh, departments running during this process where we can maintain a social distance of six feet and try to really minimize the number of people in and out of buildings. Um, so we are continuing to provide services, uh, folks are working, uh, some, in some cases remotely. Um, and in some cases in staggered shifts. Uh, but one of the things that we, we quickly realized as we, um, navigated this is that we have had a number of employees, um, who have either had to cancel, postpone, um, or otherwise, uh, not schedule leave time during this period of time. And so we were looking at a way that we could help in a way that doesn't have a financial impact, um, to, to get us through this period. And so, um, there's actually two components to this recommendation. Uh, the first has to do with our personal leave. So we have two buckets of leave that employees can use. Uh, personally, this is the more flexible of the two. Um, and it's used for anything from, you know, you got a dentist appointment to, uh, Um it's used for anything from, you know, you got a dentist appointment to uh you're sick at home. And we have uh established maximums on what can accrue in a given uh time period. And what we're asking is to allow an additional three days to accrue. Um and we essentially looked at the started in March, we're in April and the potentiality of it going into May uh which is three months and we accrue uh eight hours a month. And so for folks that are not able to uh take off their time right now uh because they're serving us um during this period of time, that we preserve their ability to use those days just at a later date. And so the crux of the temporary personal leave amendment is to essentially authorize that extra three days of accrual um which has to be used by the end of this calendar year. And that it would not be subject to a payout if that employee happened to separate. On the temporary vacation leave standpoint, um that is our second bucket of leave time. That accumulates on an employee's anniversary date. And at that time, um we don't have an entire lose, use it or lose it. Um we do have the flexibility in our policy for the manager to approve a carryover of forty hours. Um and what we are asking for is to add an additional forty hours um to that carryover clause um from now through December thirty first. So for employees that um you know, have an anniversary date coming up um where it's been uh unlikely to use that time. Uh we're essentially just trying to create a way that we're not having our staff forfeiting large balances and giving them an opportunity to use that um hopefully when things come back to normal uh down the line. And so there's a exhibit attached to the memo that explains that we're asking in a motion um to approve that exhibit. And the the second piece of this is that in order to offer those benefits to any of our employees that are in a bargaining unit, um we are simply asking for the authorization to sign that uh sign a letter of understanding should the uh bargaining units agree to that. Um and so we're offering this as a standard for our non bargaining unit employees. Um and would like to keep the ability to offer that to our bargaining unit employees. And so the motion reflects that desire. Um and with that, I'll take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Corey regarding this? Barb, does anybody have anybody, their hand up?
No, no, they do not.
Okay, Corey, you did a great job. There's no questions. Um I think that what you've put in place is great. Um we've been able to be very flexible and come up with solutions um in short period of time. And if there is, if there are no questions, um I will ask uh for a motion for this to go forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary amendments to the personal leave and vacation benefits policy as outlined in the attached exhibit A to the council packet and authorize the mayor and city manager to offer the same temporary benefit changes to the city's collective bargaining groups and to sign a letter of understanding to that effect upon agreement of the bargaining group.
Thank you, Gene.
And this is Noah and I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Gene. Uh any discussion at all? Okay, Barb, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rines.
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the action items for this evening. Uh we're gonna move right along to the discussion items uh and that would be regarding the park equipment uh at Volunteers Park and also McCormick Park. Uh Corey was able to send out several emails um regarding what we are doing to try to mitigate um the um the COVID nineteen exposure uh with people at the park. I know that we've had um several council members that have had questions for Corey regarding this, so I'm gonna turn this over to Corey and Scott if they'd like to um fill in any thing that maybe we have missed um and what precautions we've taken, what we've done.
Sure, thank you very much. Um so of all the things that we've had to take a look at, um there's no doubt one of the hardest uh decisions was what to do with our park equipment. Uh notably our playgrounds and our our basketball courts where people congregate. We did make the decision to um actually put up physical barriers to the entrances of the playgrounds um to discourage folks from using those items in the parks um as well as the basketball courts. So our early experience in the process was that um you know, we were still seeing a fair amount of gathering at the uh basketball courts um and to a lesser extent on the playgrounds. Um but due to the nature of the the way people use those and the congregating that happens um as well as, you know, the common surface areas for folks to touch, particularly little kids. Um we did make the decision to uh you know, barricade those areas um through this current uh stay home, stay safe executive order. Um you know, it, we've got some signage up there um that indicates the closures um you know, for the time being. And so uh again, very difficult decisions uh to make as as we try to uh do our part to keep people safe and discourage the the larger gatherings of people. Um but that was essentially uh what we did at the administrative level and uh you know, happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions uh or any comments that they would like to make regarding this?
Dan Rines.
Dan?
I think um we're, we're all navigating this the best we can and know there were questions that had come from some representatives from the Parks and Rec and uh other members of the community concerning the playgrounds and we need to uh take all those all those things into account. I think we've made a uh, we've made a good decision with the playgrounds. But I know there was that there's been a lot of attention brought to this on social media. And some of that was was very good and productive and some of that was was counterproductive with the, in my opinion, with the encouragement of people wanting the police called on group, small groups of people that they thought were not practicing social distancing in the way they they wanted. Um I think we're, we need to, I feel like we're walking a fine line as a city and right now we're doing a good job with that. But we need to uh continue keeping an eye on both sides of this where we're uh keeping in mind um people, people have to get out, that we can't just stay in our homes and keep an eye on each other, take care of each other, continue to social distance, but extend each other grace at the same time. That's my thought.
Any other comments or thoughts that anybody would like to share with us? Gene, can I see your hand up?
Yeah, I I can't fathom any event under our current progression of this thing where I would foresee our law enforcement resources engaging with people to enforce the six foot rule. Um I I just, I couldn't even wrap my head around that. Yeah, I I hope we're not headed in that direction or or suggesting that. I think, I think there are, is some call for it on social media. Uh but my God, that's that's not Williamson.
Chief, are you out there?
Hey, hang on, Nor.
Hey, Chief, how you doing?
Chief, you're muted.
You're dead.
Holly, can you unmute him?
No, he keeps muting himself.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
No.
Oh, we can.
Now we can.
Oh, okay, yes, and and so well, let me have a broader statement. Um our community has been wonderful. And actually, I'm surprised for this duration of stay at home, how good they have been. My officers are kind of bored and that's a good thing when they're bored and we've had some minor clarifications on some of the governor's orders because they've been coming out pretty steady and Department of Health and Human Services and the County Health Department. And so we've had a handful of complaints where we've just given guidance and clarification, but it's just educational. And and so um I agree with Gene that um we've our officers have been down a couple of times at the basketball course prior to them being closed and say, hey, you guys need to social distance and we've got cooperation. And so um things are doing good in Williamson.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any other questions, comments regarding uh city facilities or the parks or anything like that and what we're doing to help mitigate the exposure?
Looks like Scott and John. Scott?
Scott, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that um, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that everything that we've done seems to be pretty consistent with most of the communities in southern part of Michigan. Uh we've done a lot of checking with that. And um so there, it's not just Williamson that's been making this this difficult choice.
Well, I think you guys have done a fantastic job. It's hard decisions that have to be made. John, your comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we can, if we're gonna close anything else down or when it reopens, that we post that to the Facebook or social media page. So let the citizens know what's going on. Might head some of this off a little quicker. Unfortunately, that's what everybody's using right now to communicate with these times.
Tammy, real, real quick.
Duly noted.
Real quick, uh Tammy, uh I just wanted to verify
Go ahead.
Do our, do our first responders, do they have um access to the PPE needed to have those interactions with people? Were we able to source enough?
Gene, this is Bob. Yeah, we we've been very blessed. Um Nisa has been very gracious and and uh the community as a whole has. And so we are good for personal protection equipment. We have weekly meetings with all the chiefs uh via Zoom and actually law enforcement in the whole Ingham County is doing pretty well, but uh thanks for asking, but we're we're well taken care of.
Excellent. Um any other points of discussion for this? Okay, um moving right along on our agenda. Uh we did not receive any correspondence and so I'm gonna move right into the department head reports. Corey, you gave us a memo. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, I would just verbally like to note that uh usually right about this time of year uh we are coming together to hold a budget work session. Um given everything that's gone on, we've uh held off on scheduling one of those. Frankly, wanted to see how this worked uh using Zoom and it may be that we have to start that process um in a virtual way. Um the other aspect of the budget that I just want to take one minute to talk about is, you know, we are awaiting to see what this economic impact's going to mean for really, there's, there's two primary revenue sources um that we will get impacted by. The first is revenue sharing that is sent to us from the state of Michigan. Um and the second is our gas taxes, which funds our major and local streets funds. Um you know, the state has not come out with guidance on that yet. They typically will do a revenue conference in early May. And if you read Rachel's report um after, in the packet after my memo, um she has some key dates in there that are coming where we will have a better sense of what this is gonna do uh for revenues. And so we are, I guess, cautiously waiting for those uh those pieces of information. Uh Rachel had pointed out, there's a webinar with the Treasury Department next week um where we're hopeful to get some guidance on that, on those two revenue sources in particular. Um what I want to leave with is if there is a large impact, I think we will feel more of that after July first than in this current fiscal year. And so um you know, right now we are not overly concerned about where we're heading as of June thirtieth. Um but certainly the longer that the 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 economy is shut down, um if that starts to trickle into July, uh that's where we will start to really see an impact. Um and so there's more to come on this topic and um we'll get into that, I'm sure, as we do our budget work sessions. Um but we are working through that and attempting to figure out how to present a budget when we have some of these key revenue uncertainties. And so that is our uh our path for the time being. Um and we'll, we'll look forward to talking more as we consider doing a budget work session. Thanks.
Any questions for Corey? Okay, moving right along, we have uh Chief, anything else you would like to add?
No, I've already talked way more than I generally do at a council meeting, so that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Chief. Rachel, great report. Thank you so much. Um appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Rachel regarding her report? All right, moving right along. Um we've not had any uh meetings since this uh shutdown went into effect, so um I don't believe there would be any committee or subcommittee reports that are um available to be offered up. Uh we have another opportunity for audience participation. Holly, is there anybody out there?
Monica Schaefer is still with us. Um, am I muted still? Nope, you're on. Okay, good.
No.
Yeah, I would just like to say that um with, you know, talking about the farmer's market. Um I I truly believe that the farmer's market is a strength in a community. It brings people together. Um I'm very happy that you renewed it for the five year because they need the continuity and customers, they need to also know that it's gonna be there every Sunday regardless. And um I I'm just very appreciative of that. Thank you for renewing that for Williamson. Um it's a, it's a stronghold in our community.
Thank you, Monica, and thank you for joining us this evening. We weren't sure we were gonna have anybody up there besides us. So we appreciate you joining in. Uh if there's no other uh audience participation comments, I run to council members and so I'm gonna swipe and I will call on you. Uh let's see, Dan.
Um I'd just like to commend the community with the way they've come together in these uh these difficult times, a lot of different groups doing a lot of good things. I know the the food bank's been getting a lot of extra help and donations and that's amazing. The uh the folks that did the uh painted the rocks and put them out in McCormick Park for the no-touch Easter egg hunt. My uh my kids thought that was amazing. So there's just a lot of uh really good ways that the town's coming together and uh helping each other out and we all need to uh to continue doing that. It's great.
Thank you, Dan. Noah?
Uh ditto on everything that Dan said and I'd like to uh make compliments to Corey and their staff and working out this meeting and also working with me on the accounts receivable. Excellent job, guys. Keep it up and be safe.
Uh Gene?
Well, uh yeah, gigantic uh kudos to city staff. Um definitely hats off to our our police officers and and Nisa members as well, working through this. Definitely, you know, it's a unique challenge. Um I I would throw out there, uh you know, we've got a lot of families that um may have overbought on food a little bit uh in preparation for some of this. Um when all this is over, you're gonna have a lot of stuff sitting in that pantry that's likely to just go bad. We have an amazing food bank in town, so I think, you know, when you feel it's comfortable, um get that food to the food bank. Um uh it's gonna go to a good use and not just sit there and expire. Um and yeah, I I think that's it.
All right, um Mr. Weiss.
Hey, uh Dan, what's on tap for the Jubilee?
You know, um at our last meeting in April, we set uh what we were calling uh kind of a drop dead date of May seventeenth. That was the last day we had to make a decision before all the groups involved had to start spending large amounts of money to uh to put on the festival. Um currently, the Currently, the federal guidelines from the CDC for no gatherings larger than ten are set to be revisited on the sixteenth of May. So that's kind of, uh, a, a large factor in, in what's happening. We have a few different options on the table. That we're, that we're looking at, uh, possibly trying to move it, uh, later in the summer, different things like that. But right now we're, uh. We're kind of in a holding pattern, trying to see, uh, what we can do. We. We're not certain what Jubilee is going to look like this year, but we would like to. Do something, even if it looks different, just to give, uh, give town the opportunity to get together. And have a good time and supports these businesses that are having a, uh, really hard time right now. But we don't know exactly what that's gonna look like.
Thanks, Dan. I hope it's the biggest one we've ever had. Thanks.
For sure.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Jeff. Uh, let's see, uh. Jeff Roland.
Thanks, Tammy. Um, yeah, again, uh, to second what a lot of people said here tonight with the, uh, city staff. Um, wow, I mean, just putting this together, even this is my first time on, uh, Zoom, so. Apologies, it was not till the end. I understood if you click on participant and then you can click on raise hand. I'm presuming that's what a lot of people were doing, so that was not just my type A personality taking over. Uh, still figuring it out, but, uh, yeah, so sorry if I stepped on any hands there. But, uh, yeah, um, a lot of, very excited about the farmer's market and, uh, you know, definitely excited to hear them talking about, uh. Potentially opening up some, uh, you know, winter, um, scenarios. That, that'd be super cool. So looking forward to, uh. Working with them, even though there are a lot of tough questions there tonight. But, uh, yeah, looking forward to that, starting up and excited that's part of the executive order, so. Something for us too. Not sure how the new thirteen foot, um, CDC guideline is gonna work at the farmer's market, but sure we can get some tape on the. pavement or something and work that out, but yeah, that's all I had. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, John?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what everybody else said. I think it's, everything they've said is good and spot on, but I'd also like to include, uh. Class of twenty twenty, um, this group of seniors is not gonna be having a commencement. They've not been able to finish their school year, no prom, no signing yearbooks. I like how the community's coming together with signs and things like that. And to put it out there, my wife inquired today about putting up a banner over Plutnum congratulating the class of twenty twenty. I just would like the, hopefully everybody in the city shows and their support. I mean, it's a tough time for them. Especially not being able to say their goodbyes and things like most of us probably got to, so. And there's an idea for a Ju- that, that's a good idea for a Jubilee, uh, theme, recognizing the class of twenty twenty.
That's, that's a great idea. Um, I just wanted to take a, a, an opportunity, just like everybody else has, to really, um. If everybody could just give a round of applause or a high five or something for our city staff, um, you know, we all have our day jobs and this is their day job. And they've kept this city running smoothly. Um, these are processes and policies that we did not have into, in place. And they came through, um, with just amazing, um, ability in short amount of time and have kept us running. And so I really just wanted to acknowledge, uh, city staff at, at City Hall. Scott, your team out on. Out in the public eye, uh, still operating and, and doing what they need to do, um, at the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, and the DPW staff that's out and about in town. Um, it's, we couldn't do it without everybody, um, working together and coming up with solutions and Chief. Uh, your staff as well and whatever reserve officers that you have, uh, still coming in. I just wanna say thank you so much. The, it's not easy to be able to wrap your head around this. And figure out how you can move forward in these circumstances, but, um, in reading the different. Uh, emails that I see come through on the, on my mayor's listserv that I'm a part of through MML, um, I think we're doing. An amazing job in comparison to some other communities out there. So hats off to you guys, uh, for making. Uh, our city be able to get through this comfortably.
Not to step on Tammy's toes, but I forgot to say this earlier. Um, I, I agree that the city staff have been doing an amazing job and. Our staff was bringing up things in emails to council that were then coming out from the, as recommendations from the state. Uh, weeks later. So in a lot of ways, our staff has been a, ahead of the curve and that's been amazing.
Yep, I, I, I could not agree more. Um, if nobody else has any other comments or. Anything that they want to share, I am going to move that we adjourn this meeting at. Eight sixteen PM.